Good afternoon, everyone. It is one o'clock and we're ready to go here at the City Planning Commission. I'm Dan Ghorodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Cerulo, Gold, Kirmani, Marine, and Osorio. And before we get to today's agenda, I just want to go over some recent news from the Department of City Planning. Earlier this month, we marked the one-year anniversary of the City Council's approval of City of Yes for Economic Opportunity. Yes, it has been an entire year. This important initiative, which modernized our commercial and manufacturing zoning, is already paying off. Since the plan went into effect, the city has seen 8,850 new storefront businesses open, including the type of businesses that previously were not permitted by our archaic zoning regulations. More than 500 of these are in formerly vacant storefronts that, under the old rules, might have stayed empty permanently. For example, City of Yes for Economic Opportunity allowed amusements like arcades, laser tag, and mini golf in more parts of the city. Over the past year, more than 50 such businesses have opened. State-of-the-art life sciences facilities at Spark Kips Bay and 455 First Avenue also took advantage of new flexibility created by City of Yes to continue to grow this important sector in New York. By updating our zoning for a modern economy, we have charted a path for a more prosperous future, and I look forward to seeing many more wins for our economy. Another exciting update, earlier this month, we took two important steps to help projects enter public review and break ground more quickly in order to address our housing crisis and to enable more economic opportunity. Our improved zoning application portal now allows land use applicants to self-initiate projects online rather than having to correspond with city planning through email. And our brand-new Seeker data hub centralizes over 150 data sets in one place for applicants to more easily begin their environmental review process. Building on initiatives like Green Fast Track, these are great examples of how we are continuously working to cut red tape and to enable more homes and opportunities for New Yorkers. Very excited about all of that. So let's now get to today's agenda. We're going to start with a special presentation by the New York City Department of Design and Construction, DDC, and Transformative Reform Group on the design of the Borough Base Jail that will be located in the Bronx. This is part of the ongoing work by the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice and Department of Corrections to replace the jails on Rikers Island with a network of four modern, more humane jail sites in Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx. These new facilities aim to serve as a catalyst for positive change in the community and the broader justice system. From there, we will review a new proposal to map a commercial overlay at 1815 Francis Lewis Boulevard in Clearview, Queens. This mapping would bring an existing medical office building into conformance with the underlying zoning. No new developments are being proposed for this site. Next, we'll head to Times Square to learn about an application to modify signage regulations to allow a new LED sign on the side of 1551 Broadway. The sign would be around 120 feet tall and overlook Father Duffy Square. Back before us today, from its review at Community Board 7, is the Bell Nord, a mixed-use building at 2360 Broadway on the Upper West Side. The applicant is seeking to allow a bank to occupy more than the permitted 25-foot street wall width. This proposal was voted on by the commission earlier this year, and the applicant has returned to propose technical corrections to that original proposal. We'll also review a City Council modification to the proposal for Grace Houses in Brooklyn. This 100% affordable building falls within the boundaries of the East New York Neighborhood Plan. The project would include over 150 income-restricted homes and space for Grace Baptist Church. We'll wrap up with city planning staff recommendation on the Midtown South Mixed-Use Plan and a discussion on what we heard at our recent public hearing on the proposed enlargement and renovation of Lenox Hill Hospital. So, let's do it. Let's get started. Madam Secretary, floor is yours. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome to City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, June 16, 2025. The time is 1:05 PM, and a quorum is present. We'll start today's session with a special presentation on the Borough Base Jails Program. We are joined today by the Department of Design and Construction and the Transformative Reform Group.
Great, welcome. Good afternoon. Let me just ask you to, there's a little button at the base of the microphone, which you should push.
There it is.
Thank you.
Okay. So, my name is Eduardo Luvaya. I'm the Deputy Commissioner with the Design, the Department of Design and Construction, New York City. We are overseeing the design and construction of the four facilities for the BBJ program, the Borough Base Jail program. Today, we will provide you with an update on the overall BBJ program, including, of course, more specifically, the Bronx facility. So, we are here today to brief the commission on our recent BBJ milestones. We are pleased to continue to honor the commitment DDC made in 2019 during the commission's review of the BBJ ULP application. In addition to the commission presentations, DDC has engaged in a strong collaborative process with DCP over the years. Having this connection has been valuable to keeping the BBJ facility projects moving forward while also ensuring good planning and design outcomes. We thank you for the opportunity of being here and appreciate your collaboration. We'll start with an overall program update inclusive of all four facilities in the BBJ program. As per our previous commitments, the BBJ facilities will be designed as state-of-the-art facilities, fostering safety and well-being for people in custody as well as staff and visitors, providing spaces for quality education, health, and therapeutic programming. Four facilities will be located, one each, in the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, and Queens. The team here today is composed of the Department of Design and Construction, as well as our program management consultant, ACOM Hill Joint Venture, and of course, the sponsor agencies, the Department of Correction, Correction Health Services, and MACJ. And of course, we do have city hall representation as well, and as was said before, TRG, our design builder, who will introduce himself shortly. We'll be available, of course, for Q and A following the presentation. Today's presentation will focus on the Bronx facility, as I said before, for which notice to proceed was issued last August. So over the past 10 months, we've been hard at work developing the conceptual design. Concurrently, we've made impressive progress on the other facilities since the last presentation to the commission in 2023. The Brooklyn facility has completed design. We are 100% CDs, and construction is well underway. We are, at this point, with a course above ground. The Queens facility, which also received notice to proceed in last August, will be presented to the commission in the coming weeks. And notice to proceed was issued for the Manhattan facility just this past month. Design excellence is at the core of everything that we do at DDC. DDC is committed to building the BBJ facilities on time and within budget. On the screen, you'll see some of the key design topics that we're focused on and continue to solicit community input from. And with that, I'll now hand it off to our design builder, TRG. Larry?
Thank you, Eduardo. I'm Larry Guterman of Urban Architects, and Design Manager of the Design Build Team for the BBJ Bronx Facility. Currently, we are in the middle of the design phase. We've held two community design input workshops and submitted the conceptual design to the Public Design Commission. We're holding a third community design input workshop next Monday. The graphic represents that. I'll go into the site. The site is in the east Mott Haven neighborhood of the Bronx, in the former NYPD tow pound. It's located near St. Mary's Park. Closer up, the site is at the juncture of Southern Boulevard and Bruckner Boulevard and between 141st and 142nd Street, along with Concord Avenue on the west side. Nowhere, as the diagram shows, is a purely ULP agreement. There is a parcel or portion of the site set aside for an affordable housing project. We understand that the Housing and Preservation Development Agency is currently finalizing their schedule. These photos show, on a nicer day than today, the site in its current state. The site can be characterized as sitting at the juncture of residential and industrial neighborhoods. This has helped inform the design, so that to the west, between beyond the HPD site, Concord Avenue, low-rise townhouse construction typical of the residential neighborhood in East Mott Haven, to the north, east, and south, larger-scale industrial buildings on both sides of the expressway. There's ample public transportation in the neighborhood, most notably the East 143rd Street stop on the 6th train, which is up Southern Boulevard, about a block and a half north of the site. And then there's a bus service around, and there's even city bike service in this area. Immediately surrounding the site, two-way streets with street parking, designated street parking, although admittedly they're narrow streets, along with quite a number of street trees on those streets. Going to the overall planning strategy, these diagrams here show a progression of how we determined to place major entry and access points to disperse them around the site, so that we have a public entry, and we have a community and retail entry, primary community entry, remote from the main public entry, and then a staff entry on 142nd Street, remote from the public entry, basically strategically dispersed. And we developed the building as basically a base or podium that extends upward from the building line with a tower above that. This diagram shows the tower sitting on the base, the form of the building, from the north looking south, and confirms compliance with all area setback requirements established by the ULP and put into the zoning resolution. The base of the building has the common functions of the jail and the public-facing functions, the public lobby, community retail, program services, health services for the persons in custody. The tower is the housing units with the 43 housing units that make up the jail, total 1,040 beds for male inmates, persons in custody, excuse me. Ground floor plan gives an idea of how these public-facing functions relate to each other, so that at the northeast corner, we have the public lobby, which is the entry or the front door of the building, in a sense. Wrapping around Southern Boulevard down to 141st Street, 40,000 gross square feet of community and retail space. Exact tendencies to be confirmed in the future process, but this is the space that's being provided at the ground floor. The staff lobby indicated at the upper left on East 142nd Street. We anticipate high-volume entrance when shift changes and the like happen for the DOC and other support personnel who would enter the building on a regular basis. On the left or western edge adjacent to the HPD site is the vehicular access, essentially a private drive that extends north. Vehicles enter from the south, proceed north, then exit out 142nd Street in the course of normal operations. The tower floor plan is a unique arrangement for this building, I believe among the BBJ jails, in that we have these triangular pedals that we've created in the plan that fit the housing units, the day rooms, the cells, and the outdoor recreation for each, in such a manner as to ensure that natural light extends to each housing unit without exception as we extend up through the building. Renderings or visualizations, this is a view that we've seen and had and updated in various presentations and workshops. It shows the building from above the Bruckner Expressway, looking west, northwest, and you can see that in the foreground of the building are the setbacks we created at the community entry level to create a more human-scaled facade and a presence at the street compared to the other parts of the building. I'll explain that on the next slide. So looking from where Southern Boulevard and Bruckner Boulevard meet, on the right side is a more monumental main public entrance to the building that announces the front door of the building, and can be seen from afar. A more close-up view, as one might see coming down Southern Boulevard, shows the same entry. It has a large archway, but then also has a canopy that can protect people from inclement weather, and then archway surrounding the doors, again as a visual reinforcement and wayfinding to the entry of the building. A view from the residential neighborhood showing the setback, the building reduces its mass towards the residential-facing side of the area. At the public lobby, as you enter the front door, you enter the public lobby, there's a reception desk, the space is intended to be welcoming. The lobby extends westward back towards the screening area where people would proceed to visiting, assuming they're there to visit a person in custody. The design approach focuses on creating a non-institutional look while providing seating, children's play area, and other amenities. We've adjusted the public lobby seating and amenity layout based on input from the community. Now, have our lead design architect, John Setra, discuss the facade design in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm John Setra, Principal Setra Ruddy. Let's go on. While the massing reflects the program elements within the building, it also reflects the scale of the surrounding neighborhood. To the west, the prevalent materials found are masonry with the varying patterns of punched-window openings within the buildings. Proposed materials for the podium are made of terracotta that reflects the colors that are found there. Transparent and translucent glazing are incorporated to bring plenty of daylight into the building. The tower above sets back from the podium, reflecting the change in program and varies in materials as well. Glass and metal elements of different dimensions and depth and width frame each of the sections. Proportions and architectural rhythms that are found within the community as well were used as a guiding principle for how to develop the facades further in detail. Open recreation areas that are located in each corner are carefully composed of metal screens that allow daylight and fresh air to flow through while maintaining a high level of security that is required from the program. Visual transparency is very important and provided at the retail storefronts and building entrances on all street sides in order to promote a sense of welcoming and openness to the pedestrian. The elevations show a variety of different things. However, I think what's important to point out is how the podium responds to the street environment on every street and how the scale changes between entrances and varying entrances, as Larry pointed out. So here, on 141st Street, you see the podium running along the street, but it's broken down so that at the corners, it opens up and it creates what is a very large building into different segments, which relate to the pedestrian experience. When you come around to Southern Boulevard, and you'll see there as well a breakdown into a smaller scale for the community entrance, but the building has a very strong civic presence on 142nd Street at that corner. And then as you continue around the corner, again, you see the prominent entrance on that corner to the east, and as it continues to the west, then further breaks down so that it's more discreet entrance into where the employees will come in. The west-facing facade is where there is the vehicular access. That access will be primarily covered, so that there'll be a green roof above, as you see there in the drawing, with then some administrative surface spaces that then create the podium with the residential units above. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Beth Franz with Quinnell Rothschild &amp; Partners with the Landscape Architects on this project, and we'll get started talking about the landscape. So the new landscape is really going to transform the pedestrian experience in East Mott Haven with a vibrant and welcoming streetscape that links the residential areas, the commercial and the waterfront areas, along a new civic corridor. It's inspired by St. Mary's Park. We will be providing a new neighborhood hub for community gathering and places of respite that are away from the very busy Southern and Bruckner Boulevards. The new design respects the existing traffic flows and vehicular circulation around the site by creating bypass lanes. There's a drop-off lane for folks along Southern Boulevard, as well as a lay-by and vehicle-stacking lane for the facility vehicles that are going into and out of the building from 142nd to 141st. So this way, all of the facility traffic is outside of the main traffic lanes. The plan itself has a generously wide, sinuous streetscape between plantings wrapping around the entire site with ample amounts of different types of seating and bike racks on all three sides concentrated near building entrances. And of course, the whole site needs to be protected, so there's a series of barriers we are using that are going to be hidden within the landscape, everything from traditional bollards to bollards disguised as fences, low structural seat walls, low structural walls, and structural planters. All of these will be hiding bollards within them. And this plan shows where they are located. They're all located in the right-of-way around the perimeter of the site so that they can be disguised and downplayed. The site will be amply lit for pedestrian comfort from standard DOT fixtures along the right-of-way, as well as building-mounted lighting to light up the landscape. And in this enlarged view, the facility entry, the entry itself actually mimics the sort of monumental nature of the building, but it's very open and accessible visually relatable from the north as you come from the subway, and has seating on both sides. It is also ADA-accessible. And at the southeastern corner where the building sets back, it allows us for a great opportunity to provide large-planted islands with shade and a variety of formal and informal seating for community gathering. The materials palette is really going to relate both to the building materials, of course, and also the local materials in the area. And the plant materials palette, again, set to evoke St. Mary's Park, is all native and naturalized plants approved by New York City Parks and DOT, and as requested by the community, they all have very low pollen counts. So in this first rendering of East 141st Street, you can see what I'm talking about, generously wide planted areas, a variety of seating for folks there, and this is the south side, so we have quite a bit of shading on the perimeter to shade the sidewalk area. On the north side, this is the quiet respite I mentioned, this is off to the north side, the most direct connection to the residential neighborhood, nice and shady. And then on the east side, where we're next to the Bruckner and Southern, we've introduced vertical planters here to create both a visual and a physical separation from the busiest portion of the traffic, give pedestrians more of a sense of comfort. This is an example of the way that the main entry is going to feel open and welcoming and accessible. And this is our neighborhood hub that I mentioned at the southeast corner, so this is a great place for the community to gather and relax under the shade. And that's all we have, so I thank you for your time, and we now welcome all of your questions.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate your being here and sharing those details. I have two questions. I'm just going to throw them both out there and let you address them with whichever personnel is appropriate, and then I'll go to my colleagues. First, I want to see if you could spend a minute talking about the interaction between the proposed jail and the HPD site next door. I know there's a driveway that separates them, which looks like it is enclosed, but I'd like you just to address that as it relates to noise, or security, or light between the two buildings. So that's one. And the second was, there are a couple of pedestrian refuges across the street or in either direction, close to Bruckner Boulevard. Can you talk about what might be the opportunity for connection to those public spaces? Those are my two questions, and then I'll go to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the landscape question first. Yeah, so the pedestrian refuge islands, there is one basically on sort of the northeast side and then one on the south side. They are both controlled by DOT, so we don't have the opportunity to change or make improvements to them. They are, at least the one in the northeast is a bio swell, so what we are doing is we are bumping out the sidewalk along Southern and Bruckner Boulevard and also at 141st Street, so that we can, one, narrow those crosswalks, and by doing so, we can make a safer crossing for all of the pedestrians who are using those pedestrian islands on their way to other locations. So that's for both locations, and then also, of course, the crossing to the protected bike lane under the Bruckner. The other thing we are doing is we have taken an inventory of all the plant materials on both of those islands, and we are repeating those plant materials in hours so that there's a visual connection between both sites. Thank you.
Thank you. To your earlier question about the adjacent HPD site, we have been in consultation with the HPD and have shared with them the materials that we presented to the Public Design Commission about the design. Most of the driveway along the edge is enclosed. It's also secure. It's within a vehicular Sally Port. I would have to defer to my colleagues from Department of Correction to speak to any operational aspect of that, but the many aspects of the relationship of the HPD building to the jail would necessarily have to be informed by the HPD design itself.
Okay. Do you all want to add anything else on that? Yeah, it seems like... Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you. You all want to add anything else on that? Yeah, it seems like... Okay. Go ahead. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Yeah, it seems like... Go ahead. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alex Molnado. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Strategic Operations for the Department of Corrections. I don't have much to add, other than, you know, obviously, the design of the HPD building will kind of inform how we operate, but that being said, the Sally Port is secure. We're designing all of the building and the facade to sort of shield any view into the HPD building, and so hopefully that helps your...
Okay. Thank you very much. Hey, can we go to Vice Chair Knuckles, followed by Commissioners Cirulo and Osorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Lumen, I believe it was, L-U-M-E-N, is that the construction manager on the team?
DRG.
DRG.
T-R-G.
T-R-G.
T-R-G is the construction, is the builder, the design builder of the project. Lumen Architecture is actually the lighting designer.
Oh, okay. So the substantial completion on here is the second quarter of 2031.
Correct.
Could you just go through that to the degree that you can? It's now 25.
That includes, obviously...
Could somebody come to the mic? Come on up.
All right, Joe, come on up. Good afternoon. Joseph Mizzi, President and Partner at Tsami Construction Company. Tsami Construction, along with SLS Company and Sweet Construction, with a construction, with a design builder as well as the constructor for the project. The way the schedule's mapping out right now, we're planning on breaking ground, start the sites, as you couldn't really tell too well from the photographs, but the sites, the rock is excavated. We're moving right into, we have some specific trimming of the rock to the final design, but we're moving right into foundations. Foundations will start quarter two, 2026. We have a, between foundations and superstructure concrete, we have roughly a 12 to 18-month period of time, followed by building enclosure. We're using prefabricated housing units. There's 1,040 housing units. They'll be fabricated off-site, and actually, when Larry explained the concept of the outdoor recreational areas, we'll be loading those housing units into those locations, and it's approximately a five-year construction duration, beginning with the early foundation work. And the subsequent aspects of the project will be project interiors, complex security, mechanical systems, et cetera.
So this whole issue of tariffs, et cetera, has that impacted your construction budget in any meaningful way?
No. We're certainly aware and tracking carefully the tariffs. We do have a full design assist cadre of key subcontractors, so we're working with New Hudson Facades, who's a US-based facade contractor. We're a superstructure concrete building, so the steel tariff is less impactful than a steel building, and we're certainly monitoring our prices. There are some, currently, we're, we've given a 25, we're a 25% design development. We just submitted a budget, design development, 25% within the initial contract price.
So at this point, what do you project the construction cost to be?
Sure. Our mandate is to keep it within the initial contract price, which is $2.95 billion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Cirulo?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, a question on the sort of the horticultural design and the landscaping. Thank you. Obviously, it's very beautiful, and I'm really focused on what's happening on the exterior, not necessarily on the interior. And I just wonder, since design is in progress, you know, the value, not in dollars and cents, but just in aesthetics of a design such as the renderings that we saw, matter if there's a sort of a maintenance plan and operational plan to sustain it all. And I'm just wondering, who is responsible for that at the end? And because obviously, that has an impact on the surrounding community and the facility itself, but also in the design, for example, the planters that you have that create that barrier between the sort of busy streetscape and the building and pedestrian sidewalk, are these things considered city standard? Are you working within that framework? And I'm asking questions that I know I've been challenged with myself in terms of designing public spaces and improving public spaces, and I just wonder what that relationship is with the city that at the end, they don't say, well, we don't, you know, these planters are not the kind of planters we take care of, or these tree pits are not the kind of tree pit designs we take care of. So I just want to get a sense of how those discussions are going and what the expectation may be so that this beautification doesn't occur, and in a breakdown in negotiating a maintenance agreement with someone, everyone doesn't end up walking away from it.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Yeah, so there are two parts, I guess, to the ground-level horticulture, right? There's the building-adjacent plantings, which will, without question, be maintained by the facility. They will be fully irrigated and, you know, sort of off of the city's radar, if you will. Everything along the streetscape perimeter is the purview of NYC Parks and DOT if, and it's a big if, there is any sort of bioswale opportunities, which is looking less and less likely because of the level of bedrock, but if that were the case, DEP would be involved. So we do have that sort of breakdown, basically, on one side of the property line belonging to actually the building and being permanently irrigated. Everything else on the outside of the property line will not be irrigated, is fully, fully hardy, drought tolerant, dog tolerant, salt tolerant, and seriously salt tolerant, and would be maintained by the city. We have been meeting with DOT and NYPD all throughout the process. I think I have another meeting within a week with those folks, both about the perimeter protection, that we are meeting all the guidelines they set out, but we are also very cognizant of what sort of the city DOT guidelines are for clearances in trees and planter guidelines, which we've done many times. So it's really about sort of a minimum cubic yardage to support a tree or the plants or whatever. I would also mention that the planters will be full of year-round plantings. This is not going to be sort of another burden of seasonal planting four times a year. These will be shrubs and perennials that are there all the time.
Okay. That's very helpful, and I appreciate that response, and I'm glad to hear that. I just hope the city remains a partner in all of this and at some point, not too far into it.
Right.
That there isn't another take on what some of the infrastructure of the horticultural elements are, because that's always a concern, because we want to remain beautiful around the facility, in and around the facility, of course. But I appreciate that. It'll be interesting to see how those discussions continue on, especially with irrigation systems and other things that are not typically the things the city embraces at the end. So just a little note of caution.
Understood.
But thank you for it, and the renderings are very beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for your presentation, for sharing where you are with this. It's interesting to see how much effort has been invested into the design of the building, and that's very appreciated. I have a couple of questions. The first question was, when you came back, when you came the last time here to share the updates with the Brooklyn building, you had a really useful slide that described the community outreach process, which wasn't included in this presentation, so I was wondering if you can share a little bit about the scope and extent of that process, and specifically, I want to understand who, what is the composition of the neighborhood advisory committees in this case? What are the organizations that have been, you know, participating in this? Thank you for your references and your notes in terms of changes that you've made to cater to what you've learned through the process, but I would love to hear a little bit more about the scope and extent of that.
You're going to do it?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Taylor.
Hello. I'm Taylor Wilson-Austen, Agency Engagement Manager for the program. We don't have our community engagement folks here today, so I think we can follow up with you to provide more specific information about what you're looking for, but the process that you're seeing here on this slide for the Bronx facility is, follows what we did in Brooklyn and what we'll be doing for the other facilities as well, where we have multiple design workshops with the community, as well as presentations to the community board, and then further engagement down the line as we get into construction.
Thank you. Yeah, if you can provide more information, that would be great. I was just really impressed with that other slide and the other presentations. I think, just saw it, it was like 150 community meetings, which I thought was really impressive. I would love to understand what that entails here. And then the other question is, can you also just share a little bit, sort of, I mean, I have a couple more questions. One is, can you expand a little bit on the conditions or the design principles surrounding the locational spaces? There was in one of the cross-sections, when you were presenting the landscape design interventions, we could see the locational spaces, but there wasn't anything in the presentation specifically about them? Can you share a little bit about how many seats, whether they have windows, where are they located in the building in general?
Vocational spaces?
Locational.
Okay. They're located on the top base floor of the building, the third floor, so they're adjacent vertically to the persons in custody, which is, of course, necessary for security purposes as the spaces below are for either use by DOC staff or for the public or other functions. I dare not go further than that.
Oh, but they're not...
On the inner workings of the building. But there's a range of activities, including indoor recreation, classrooms for vocational purposes, classrooms for educational purposes for younger people, and there's special specialties like culinary arts and music and horticulture, to name a few. There are religious spaces on the floor, mosque and multi-faith as well.
Thank you. If you can provide additional information to us on that, I'm very interested in really understanding the conditions of the educational spaces for inmates.
Educational.
Yeah, thank you. Like, it sounds like with the, different from the Brooklyn building, in this case, you're more exposed to natural light and stuff, and so I would love to hear, love to see what are the conditions of those spaces in that regard. I also noticed that you had one of the renderings, although they're illustrative, there's a series of solar panels. I was wondering if you can expand a little bit on what are the sustainability strategies that are being considered right now?
Well, the overall sustainability approach to the building is, we have to comply with many of the city, the applicable laws that the city has. The roofs have to either contain photovoltaics or green roofs, you know, again, both for renewable energy and for reducing urban heat island effect. You know, we've made all the attempts we can with stormwater management, but being an urban site, there are limitations with that. All manner of daylighting control within the building, as the building's operations will permit, are also provided. The design is on target to meet LEED gold certification, as is required by applicable laws and our contract as a design builder with the city of New York. That's about as far as I can go.
Thank you. Again, if you can share more information, I would love to see that specifically on the energy, overall energy matrix and water management. That would be really interesting. And then just finally, so something that I raised when you came back, when you came the last time, but also seems to be the case here with East 141st Street, is that there's a proposed bike rack right before vehicular entry, and so that was the same case with the Brooklyn building, where something similar happened on State Street? And so on this one, I'm wondering if you can share a little bit about how are you addressing that? And given that the design for the Brooklyn building has been completed, I would appreciate if you can maybe follow up with some information on that, too.
Let Beth speak to our bike rack, please.
Sure, I can talk to you about bike racks.
Thank you.
You know, as I'm sure you're all aware, this is constantly evolving, this process, so what we showed you today is still evolving, as you well know, and when we met with some city planning folks who came to our office and took a look, oh, a month or more ago, bike racks were actually one of the things that they were pretty concerned about. So we have made some changes to the locations of the bike racks. We've cleared them from the main entrance so that there's more space and people can be under the canopy rather than bike racks being under the canopy. And the bike racks that I think you're seeing in the plan that we saw today, which were closer to the drive, have now been moved to the middle of the block already, so we've already addressed that concern.
Yeah, that, I can see that in the, on the East 141st, but is that the case in the Brooklyn building? Or you're not in the Brooklyn building?
That I can't tell you, but Taylor will come up.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. But also, the bike lane is still active, right? You would still have the conflict between the vehicular entry and the bike lane on East 141st?
No, because we've shifted it quite a bit away. So rather than being close to that vehicular drive, it's now, it's now in the mid-block, closer to the main community hub area on the southeast.
But the bike lane remains?
Oh, there's no bike lane on East 141st. It's the protected bike lane under the Bruckner.
Okay, got it.
Yep. And then just to the Brooklyn facility, can't speak to that at the moment, but we'll follow up. There's been a lot of design evolution.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kramani, followed by Commissioner Marine and Ramperchad, and then we're moving on.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks for the presentation. Actually, Commissioner Osorio asked my question on community engagement and also the observation of how useful that slide was in the Brooklyn presentation, and would very, very much like to understand more fully the community engagement process, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Marine?
Thank you, Chair. I have but two questions. One is along the lines of the questioning that Commissioner Cirulo did, except I have one further question. It is concerning the plantings and the surrounding. The reason why I do this, I ask this question is because, as we know, there is a bioswale right across the street, and it is maintained, supposed to be maintained by DOT, and it is not, and it looks horrible. And so while the effort is laudable, the, you know, the results aren't pretty because they're not kept up. So is this an instance where maybe the Department of Corrections could enter into contract with the borough-based jail to maintain the entire surrounding of the jail so that it could look beautiful?
Hi, everyone. So one thing I can say is that for all of the borough-based jails, the department is exploring all of its options in terms of third-party maintenance contracts or hiring internal individuals, you know, different civil service titles to maintain the landscaping that is intended for all of the buildings, including the Bronx. I can't particularly speak to some of the other sites, like this DOT maintained site...
No, I realize that, but I'm bringing it up only because the young lady mentioned it in her presentation, saying that there's bioswales right across the street, and I do understand that, and I appreciate them, but they're maintained by DOT and they're not maintained, is my point. So the question really goes to who's going to maintain the perimeter here? Can we have a third-party contractor? Because to have a beautiful building with its beautiful landscaping, and then you see the sidewalk at the edge of the street looking horrible, it's not pleasing. It's defeating the purpose of what everybody's trying to do here.
No, yeah.
I'm just concerned about that.
No, absolutely, and I think that's fair. So I think we can talk to our city partners and our friends at City Hall to see what we can do as a city to maintain the property around the borough-based jail.
That would be appreciated. And then my second question goes to the statement that these units, the jail will be built as modular, right? So you have your superstructure coming out the ground of concrete, and then, I guess, from the podium up, you'll have modular units. First question is, where are these modular units being manufactured? And there's a concern always of a modular unit being built out of state following one set of guidelines, and then New York City, the Department of Buildings, having a different set of guidelines, and those two don't always speak to each other. So I'm looking for concerns and answers to quality control and making sure that those units do meet the guidelines that they're supposed to meet.
Yeah. Just to clarify, the housing units are the only things that are being...
Correct.
So they're being designed, and the design is being overseen by the Architects of Record, the New York City Architects of Record, and we've just completed a mock-up, which is being, it's in Mount Vernon in New York. So the oversight of the mock-ups, which will dictate the final product, are being reviewed by New York City Department of Design and Construction, Department of Corrections, and the full design team, and all of the MEP...
Um, and all the, um, all of the MEP, uh, uh, trays are being installed on, uh, onsite. So there's a chase that's prefabricated, and then the, the, all the MEPs that fill the chase are being installed, uh, onsite, uh, by local labor.
Is it a local manufacturer or is it out-of-state manufactured?
Out-of-state, uh, uh, they're being, I believe in Pennsylvania, uh, they're being fabricated.
That's where they always are, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I have one last question, I'd like to carry on.
And, and just the other thing is, uh, the, the furniture and the, uh, plumbing fixtures are all, uh, separately, um, procured and, uh, being, uh, installed off-site in coordination with the trade unions. So this is a prevailing wage project, as you, as you know.
And the structure of the modules, is that steel or is it?
Yes, steel, yep.
And then, once you come in, you'll, you'll, you'll set the, the modulars, and then of course you have to then build the rest.
Yes.
And then envelope the building.
Correct. They, um, they, uh, essentially, uh, a typical unit is a chase and two, um, modular housing units. Um, we have some ADA units and some, uh, shower units that are separate, but essentially they're, they're fabricated, uh, painted steel, uh, five-sided, um, uh, uh, five-sided, the four sides of the walls and the ceiling, and then the floor is poured after the, the, um, the unit is shimmed up on the concrete, and then, uh, we have a, a architectural poured floor in place. Bless you.
Great, thank you, I really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Nice talking to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Ramperchad.
Mr. Marin asked the exact question I was gonna ask, because this project, the timeline's been pushed further back, further back. So one of the questions I had was, number one, what are the long lead items to get, make sure? And, and number two, the foundation, I know you said you, you gotta, I guess carve out some rock, has that impacted the design right now in terms of the foundation system that you want to input? And this prefab system, is it being utilized in all the other jails?
And the last question, I can't speak for the other jails, I, I know at least, at least one of them, they are.
Right.
Um, and, um, the rock, uh, the rock was, uh, excavated under a separate contract, um, managed by the DDC, but we coordinated our, uh, foundation design, um, with the Dorados team at the DDC, and so the rock cuts that were made by, um, by the foundation contractor are consistent with our, um, our, uh, foundation design.
Right.
Um, in terms of the long lead items, right now we're focused on, um, generators, mechanical equipment, electrical switchgear, and as I mentioned before, we have a full, um, design assist team of, um, of key subcontractors, and we're, we're monitoring everything closely, including, um, curtain wall products, um, interior metals and glass, um, and security components and lighting components.
As far as the prefab cell. Hold, hold, hold about a second. If you'd like to come up as part of the team here, please do, and, uh, speak into the mic. Thank you very much.
Yeah, as far as the prefab cell units, uh, it is the same manufacturer. Uh, at this point, um, they are working with one manufacturer, and that one manufacturer has already secured DOB approvals for Brooklyn, because we already have a full permit for Brooklyn, including the prefab units. So that's, that's already been cleared.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, finally, Commissioner Gold.
Hi, thanks. Um, excuse me, a couple of points to follow up. Um, so first, just looking at the chart that's in front of us, um, I know the Vice Chair kind of asked, but I don't know if we got all the way there. When does construction start in earnest? I guess we're back to jail.
Uh, we're, aside from some enabling work, um, the, construction would start in earnest the second quarter, 2025. Six, sorry.
Exactly. I was gonna say we're there. Um, okay.
A little rusty from, uh, the weekend.
All good. Um, and then, um, second, I guess I would also wanna emphasize what, uh, Commissioners Osorio and Kramani mentioned, on the community engagement side, when we get, um, a little bit more color there, would be interesting to see, um, or to understand better, you know, with who we've engaged and throughout the process, is it just the committee, is it the community board, is it, you know, the world and how we do that? So we just ask that, um, we get some color on that. Um, and then lastly, um, on the retail mention, was curious, what do we envision there to, you know, to integrate with the community? What, what's, what are the retail items that we need that's there that would be, you know, uh, in, in my mind, I'd like to see ideally less the types of items that you'd see typically outside of jail and more of the types of items that would help, um, community-wise, but would be curious what we're thinking there, if we're thinking. Certainly don't wanna see bondsman.
We do, we are required to have bonds, I think, somewhere, but, um, we, as part of the borough-based jail program, we are committed to forty thousand square feet of community facility space at the Bronx facility. Uh, we have not yet programmed that space. We are working with city agencies, um, we're talking with, uh, the council member and the community, but as we don't plan, we aren't able to open until 2031, we are, we have not tenanted that space. So the design builder is building out a white box. Um, we are talking with BYCD, with SBS, with DCAST about teneting retail space, so it will likely be, um, you know, hybrid.
Got it. So it's more community space then than retail, or?
It's both.
It's both.
And then I believe there's also retail and HPD space, but I can get back to you.
Got it.
But yes, it's very important to us to have an active, uh, ground level.
Would agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks to all of you for, uh, your presentation today. We, uh, we really appreciate it and we appreciate, uh, all of the progress that has been made, and, um, uh, we will look forward to continuing the conversation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, with that, we're gonna move to our, uh, agenda today. Madam Secretary, would you please move to the first certification item?
The first item on our agenda is a certification of zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Seven. Our presenter is Joy Chen.
All right, Joy, welcome.
This is a private application by meditant court in the Clearview neighborhood of Queens Community District Seven, located at Eighteenth Fifteenth Francis Lewis Boulevard. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to change an existing R3-2 district to an R3-2 C1-2 district. In order to bring into conformance pre-existing medical office building containing approximately five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six square feet, no new development is proposed. The mapping of this new commercial overlay is needed to eliminate the hardship of returning to the BSA every ten years in order to renew the variance. The rezoning area is shown, um, in this, uh, aerial view. You can see in the red dot, it's located at the four-way intersection Francis Lewis Boulevard, um, One Hundred and Sixtieth Street, Eighteenth Avenue, and Nineteenth Avenue. It's south of the Cross Island Parkway in the neighborhood of Clearview, and it's a predominantly low-density residential area, um, and you have the East River to the north. The area map shows the rezoning area at the center of your screen in this red, um, outlined triangle in the center, um, where the dash lines are. Um, again, it's located at Francis Lewis Boulevard at a four-way intersection of wide streets, and this area has been, um, zoned R3-2 since the inception of the nineteen sixty-one zoning resolution. In nineteen sixty-seven, the lots immediately south to, um, the rezoning area were mapped with C1-2 commercial overlays, which reflect the, uh, commercial uses there, and, um, this rezoning area remained R3-2 despite the presence of a commercial use, which was allowed via a BSA variance in nineteen sixty. Then in two thousand and five, the Whitestone rezoning rezoned sections of this area of Clearview, um, from R3-2 districts, it mapped an R2A district to the west of Francis Lewis Boulevard, just to reflect the existing predominantly single and two-family nature of this neighborhood. The slide shows the rezoning area, a single triangular-shaped zoning lot, um, uh, Block Four, Seven, Four, Eight, Lot Forty-four. Zooming into the local context, this aerial shows the rezoning area in the red dash lines. It's, um, it's a full lot-line building, it's a triangular building, which has been in continuous commercial use via a BSA variance since nineteen sixty. So in nineteen sixty, a professional office building containing approximately two thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight square feet within a single story was constructed pursuant to the first BSA variance, which permitted an initial term of twenty years. Um, it expired in nineteen eighty, and another ten-year term was granted in nineteen eighty. Subsequent to that, a series of renewals have been granted until the present time, with, uh, the present variance expiring, uh, this summer. Here we have a view of the rezoning area and existing dental office, um, with multiple, uh, dental-related tenants, um, facing north from Francis Lewis Boulevard. And here we have a view of the rezoning area facing southeast from Eighteenth Avenue with the dental offices, um, shown at the left. And to bring existing commercial use as dental offices into conformance, um, the applicant is proposing the mapping of a new C1-2 commercial overlay, which you can see, um, on the view to the right with the dash lines, um, in order to, uh, bring this existing use into conformance. In, um, in residential R3-2 districts, the C1 allows for maximum commercial FAR of one point six, and according to the applicant, this rezoning action is appropriate, given its location on a wide street, um, at the intersection of major streets with existing commercial uses, um, both to the south and to the north of Francis Lewis Boulevard. This has a, a little bit more detail about, um, the, uh, um, the R3-2 districts, which is the underlying, um, lower dense, the lowest density district in which, uh, multiple dwellings are permitted, but commercial uses are not permitted as a right. Um, the maximum FAR for residential ranges from point seven five to one, and the proposed R3-2 C1-2 zoning district would permit a mixed-use building at a maximum one point six FAR. And C1 overlays, um, generally permit local retail and office uses in Use Group Six and Seven, and the existing medical office use is a Use Group Seven use. In conclusion, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to map a new C1-2 commercial overlay in an existing R3-2 zoning district to eliminate the hardship of having to return to the BSA every ten years in order to renew this variance for a lot, longstanding commercial use. I mean, nineteen sixty is a lifetime ago, um, and it's still in commercial use. The renewal process is costly and creates uncertainty for their potential clients, particularly when negotiating long-term leases, um, and, um, yeah, and so, uh, this is why they're proposing this new overlay here, um, at this time. This concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Joy. Um, okay, are there any questions other than whether nineteen sixty was as long ago? Uh, okay, all right, wonderful. Um, all right, thank you. This item's certified, let's move on to the next. Thank you.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of, uh, special permit and a zoning text amendment in Midtown Community District Five. Our presenter is Audrey Wachs.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Noon.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Today I'm presenting, uh, the fifteen fifty-one Broadway, application for a proposed text amendment and proposed special permit. This is a private application for a zoning text amendment to the Special Midtown District Theater Subdistrict Core that would create a new zoning special permit, uh, pursuant to ZR eighty-one, seven thirty-four, which would modify the signage and frontage regulations for zoning lots that measure ten thousand square feet, uh, in area or lots. The applicant concurrently seeks the proposed special permit to facilitate new LED signage on the development site at a fifteen fifty-one Broadway that would otherwise not comply with underlying signage regulations. The development site is in the heart of Times Square and is bounded by West Forty-seventh Street, uh, to the north, Broadway, which becomes a pedestrian plaza in this area to the east, West Forty-sixth Street to the south, and Eighth Avenue to the west. Seventh Avenue and Broadway, uh, are developed primarily, uh, with commercial use buildings and a modest number of mixed-use residential commercial buildings, which range, and these range in two to fifty-four stories in height. And in the same area, there's a high concentration of office buildings, uh, hotels, restaurants, theaters, and destination retail. Meanwhile, the mid-blocks in the surrounding area are characterized by older buildings that range in height from three to fourteen stories, uh, and buildings on both the avenues and mid-blocks typically contain active ground floor uses. So for over a hundred thirty years, Times Square's built environment has been defined by theaters and entertainment venues, as well as its large, brightly lit advertising signs. There are numerous zoning changes that affect this area, but I will focus on the ones that affect finance today. The Special Midtown District, established in nineteen eighty-two, uh, replaced the original theater district, but expanded on its goals. Uh, the Special Midtown District is intended to guide the development within the Midtown Central Business District under three goals: growth, stabilization, and preservation. Four years after the establishment of this district, the Times Square Urban Design Controls amended the special district, further entrenched the character of that Times Square bowtie where Broadway and Seventh Avenue intersect. In the next, over the next two years, a theater subdistrict core was established and additional sign requirements were added to the core, specifically street wall and setback controls for illuminated signs, including a rule that the surface area of signs are required to be continuously animated and exhibit visual changes clearly discernible by an observer at street level. Finally, uh, the special district amendments, uh, relevant to this proposed actions today are, uh, one from twenty eighteen, uh, which established a chairperson certification, uh, to allow listed theaters in the theater subdistrict core to install modified signage. As reflects its location in Midtown, the high, high-density commercial uses in the surrounding area predominate, uh, with some mixed residential, commercial, and public institution uses. The development site is zoned C670, uh, which is a district that's exclusive to the, um, Special Midtown District Theater Subdistrict. Uh, it allows a non-residential and mixed, uh, and mixed-use based maximum FAR of fourteen, and is a bonusable up to sixteen point eight FAR with allowances and incentives. Um, the surrounding area, uh, is mostly within the theater subdistrict core of that Special Midtown District, um, and the Midtown District has different bulk and density controls for each of its five sub-districts. The goal of this theater subdistrict, uh, is to preserve and protect the area as a cultural, theatrical, and entertainment showcase, uh, as well as to help ensure a secure basis for the useful cluster of shops, restaurants, and related amusement activities. The theater subdistrict is further divided into sub-subdistricts, uh, that include a core area centered around Times Square, which is outlined on the map in right, in dark, uh, in that thick blue line. The development site, uh, again, is located in that theater subdistrict core. And so to protect and, uh, preserve and protect the special care and character of the core, there are distinct, uh, uh, bulk and illuminated signage controls. Specifically relevant to the proposed actions, uh, Times Square zoning, uh, area lots between Forty-third and Fifty-eighth Streets along Broadway, um, and Seventh Avenue require signage pursuant to ZR eighty-one, seven thirty-two, and must comply with eighty-one, seven fifty-one street wall and setback requirements. The development site is a sixty, uh, six thousand two hundred and fifty square foot zoning lot comprised of two tax lots. It's improved by a three-story, uh, fifteen thousand five hundred and forty square foot commercial building, uh, which hosts three illuminated advertising signs with a combined, uh, fourteen thousand square foot surface area. And the current tenant there is, uh, clothing retailer American Eagle. Today, there are three signs required on the development site, and all three comply with the theater subdistrict core height and setback regulations for illuminated signs. height and setback regulations for illuminated signs. Moving on to current conditions, this is a view of the development site looking northwest from Seventh Avenue and West Forty-sixth Street. And here is a view of the development site looking northeast from West Forty-sixth Street. You can see in the foreground here, one of Times Square's many listed theaters. And this is a view of the development site looking south from West Forty-seventh Street down Seventh Avenue. I wanted to draw your attention to the Palace Theater, which is kitty-corner from the development site and can be seen in the foreground of this image. As I mentioned in the Special Midtown District history slide, at the beginning of this presentation in twenty eighteen, the CPC approved a private application that modified ZR eighty-one seven thirty-two and eighty-one seven fifty-one to create a new chairperson certification that allowed these listed theaters to install modified signage in this core area. This amendment applied to theaters with equal to or more square feet of, with fifteen thousand square feet or more of lot area located within a hundred feet of Broadway or Seventh Avenue. The amendment allowed the Palace Theater to install new LED sign structure that projects over ten feet over the street line and reaches a hundred twenty feet above the curb level without a setback. Finally, this is a view of the development site looking west from Seventh Avenue across the Times Square pedestrian plaza. The proposed development would replace the existing group of three signs with two new signs totaling twenty-two thousand five hundred fifteen square feet. And the new signs would include a fifteen thousand five hundred fifteen square foot LED sign, which is the proposed sign, that bottom sign, that wraps around the corner of Broadway and West Forty-sixth Street. It would have one a hundred nineteen-foot-tall panel, which begins above the curb and rises to a height of a hundred thirty-five feet. The proposed development also includes an "as-of-right" tower sign, that top sign, that has one a hundred thirty-eight-foot-tall panel, which begins a hundred twenty feet above the curb and rises to a height of two hundred fifty feet. The proposed sign is currently not permitted in Times Square as it would not comply with ZR eighty-one seven thirty-two A two, which outlines the core's Times Square signage requirements. And it would also not comply with eighty-one seven fifty-one, which provides special street wall and setback regulations. ZR eighty-one seven thirty-two A two has a number of sub-provisions, including that for every linear foot of the street frontage for a zoning lot on Seventh Avenue, Broadway, and intersecting nearest streets, up to the first forty linear feet of street frontage from either Seventh Avenue or Broadway, illuminated signs shall be provided. It further stipulates that no portion of any illuminated sign shall be located further than forty feet from the Broadway or Seventh Avenue street line or below a height of ten feet above curb level or above the top of the street wall of the building before setback as defined in eighty-one seventy-five. In addition to these requirements, and most importantly for the actions proposed today, the subsection states that there shall be a minimum of one sign with a surface area of not less than a hundred square feet for each twenty-five linear feet or part thereof of a zoning lot's street frontage on Seventh Avenue or Broadway. And the development site has three signs as required by this formula, but the proposed signage would include just two signs, and thus would be out of compliance. ZR eighty-one seven fifty-one states that buildings located on zoning lots between Forty-third and Fiftieth Streets with street frontage on Seventh Avenue or Broadway shall have a minimum street wall height before setback of fifty feet above the curb level and a maximum street wall height before setback of sixty feet above curb level on all street frontages. The development site signage currently complies with signs setback above sixty feet and sorry, at least six feet from Broadway and fifteen feet from West Forty-sixth Street. The proposed sign would begin, meanwhile, would begin at a height of sixteen feet above curb level and rise a hundred nineteen feet to a hundred thirty-five feet above the curb without that required setback above sixty feet. So in order to facilitate the proposed development, there's a proposed zoning text amendment to Article Eight, Chapter One, Section eighty-one seventy, to create a new special permit. And the special permit is as follows. It's a special permit to modify sign and frontage regulations on small zoning lots. And in the theater subdistrict, for zoning lots that contain ten thousand square feet or less of lot area, the City Planning Commission may allow, by special permit, modifications to the sign provisions of this chapter, provided that the commission finds that the modified sign is consistent with the general goals for this theater subdistrict set forth in Sections eighty-one dash zero zero and eighty-one seventy-one. The commission may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards to maximize adverse effects of such sign on the character of the surrounding area. The proposed special permit would provide zoning relief to lots ten thousand square feet or less in the Midtown, Special Midtown District Theater Subdistrict Core. It would ensure that the proposed modification is consistent with the Special Midtown District and Theater Subdistrict, as detailed in Article Eight, Chapter One. And it aims to support the ongoing vitality, heritage, and public character of Times Square by allowing the replacement of aging, fragmented signage on small zoning lots with unified LED displays that reflect recent advances in sign technology. And as of today, twenty zoning lots in this theater subdistrict core measure ten thousand square feet or less, and thus could potentially qualify for the proposed special permit. And here are the findings of that special permit. Waiver of setback in minimum sign requirements would allow contemporary LED signs that efficiently display illuminated signage across building facades, which would continue to support Times Square's entertainment-focused character while maintaining light and air to streets and avenues. Wraparound LED signage would be highly visible at the pedestrian level, providing a public amenity consistent with the special district's entertainment-focused character. Bulk flexibility for smaller lots would support the theater subdistrict's identity as a premier location for illuminated signage. And finally, a waiver of setback signage regulations for small zoning lots would enhance sign flexibility and surface area without increasing height, which would contribute to the preservation and enhancement of the scale and character of Times Square and the theater subdistrict core, which are, again, characterized by this unique combination of building scale, large illuminated signs, and entertainment and entertainment-related uses. Looking at the elevations of the proposed signage, here you can see that the proposed sign rises a hundred thirty-five feet above the curb and does not comply with the required sixty-foot setback. The proposed development also includes those two signs instead of the three required signs. Here's a section view of the proposed development, again showing the proposed sign and the tower sign. In summary, the applicant seeks to modify the signage and frontage regulations for zoning lots with ten thousand square feet or less of lot area in the Special Midtown District Theater Subdistrict Core. It also seeks, concurrently seeks, a zoning special permit to allow new LED signage on the development site that would otherwise not comply with underlying signage regulations. Thank you, and happy to take your questions.
Great, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you here at Certification. Commissioner, ma'am.
Quick question. I'm not sure, just looking back at the Palace Theater, whether that was the sort of right outcome or not, just from a signage standpoint. You know, that was approved in twenty eighteen, and it was a pretty large, visible LED screen. I think a little bit of the struggle I have is that if we are actually thinking about some of these neighborhoods, which is becoming more residential, which now, five Times Square, the commission adopted a resolution recommending to EST the conversion of, you know, large office buildings to twelve-hundred units of housing. I do, you know, worry a little bit that this kind of loud, blaring signage at the risk of editorializing isn't quite as compatible as we move into a more residential framework. And so I do think we should give that some real thought here, that Times Square is shifting, whether we think that's the right direction or not. And if it's going to end up being more residential, a hundred and sixty feet, is that right, of signage?
It would, the sign would rise to a height of two hundred fifty feet above curb level. But that, there would be two signs, so that second sign would rise to that height, but the first one would be a hundred thirty-five feet above curb level.
Right, and as I understood, is the top of the sign, that's as-of-right, right? So that's, we're not theoretically doing anything to facilitate that as part of this action, but the base sign we would be.
Correct. Oh, sorry.
No, no, I just, you know, I can imagine how these conflicts will become a concern. And I'm sure people will buy very expensive, effective blackout shades, but it does feel like it's a question we should wrestle with a little more is whether that kind of fifteen-story TV screen is as effective for enlivening or if it's actually a deterrent to residential. I just wanted to pose that. And I guess the sort of underlying question there is if we've thought at all about, you know, illumination hours or lighting intensity here. I know that in Times Square, there's a pretty extensive regulation of lighting intensity. So we're just curious if this application speaks to that at all.
Right, could you repeat that last part?
Yeah, if there's anything in the application that speaks to the level of light intensity.
It would be in compliance with the illuminated sign provisions of eighty-one seven, look this up, one moment, please. It would be in compliance with eighty-one seven thirty-two signage requirements for illumination, and that specific section is Section Three, Part Two. So I'm happy to get more details from the applicant on, you know, the specific metrics of that illumination.
Right, right, and I assume the Palace Theater also complied with those.
Yes.
Yeah, requirements, so those requirements are fairly generous from a brightness standpoint. So I think this is a question for the commission to wrestle with a little bit. It's just, you know, for really encouraging residential in these places, is this level of LED signage the direction? Question mark. So thanks for answering the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yeah. You know, I assume these kinds of applications don't come in, you know, every day or every month. And there are the findings, but I'm just, how does a department determine that a signage request like this, which, you know, is that variance with the existing regulations? How do you determine it's worthy of consideration?
Good question, thank you. So given the general goals of the Midtown, the Special Midtown District, which are, you know, growth, stabilization, preservation, and the continuation of that heritage of bright, illuminated advertising signs, there's sufficient, you know, this sufficiently would, you know, sufficiently create the conditions or the continuance of, you know, that pioneering signage that is characterized Times Square for, you know, over a hundred and thirty years.
Okay. Because this is a bit of a departure, I mean, right?
And could you clarify that?
Well, it's a departure from, you know, what's existed before.
Yes. So the, um...
No, it's okay. Please finish your statement, or I'm happy to step aside either way.
Yeah, so there is, so in addition to the Palace Theater, which, and the chairperson that enabled that, there's also signage at the, nearby signage at the Morgan Family Building, which is one, let me double-check on this, but it's adjacent, closely proximate to the development site. And, you know, is that continuous LED panel signage as well.
And thank you for the question, Vice Chair. And, you know, if you were speaking more broadly about how we approach signage proposals in general, I mean, I think as Audrey said, in this particular case, you know, we've noted the goals and objectives of Times Square signage regulations and changing sign technology. You know, in other instances, applicants have come to us seeking waiver from signage requirements because, you know, they are repurposing a building, for example, and, you know, the change in program of the building warrants a change in, you know, signage. In other instances, we, you know, have a more critical take on signage, you know, if the department feels that it's not supported by a strong land use rationale. And, you know, in some of those cases, you know, applicants may change the proposal, you know, in response to our comments before it comes to the commission. So there's no one-size-fits-all approach. You know, the signage regulations are pretty varied, depending on zoning districts and context, and, you know, our responses similarly varied as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, I will just only add my own voice on this one, which is that I want my Times Square signage to be dynamic and cutting-edge and compelling. And one of the things that I find most exciting about Times Square is the fact that that's what you get there. So I'm not, I perhaps don't share the concern, some of the concerns that were raised here, but I did want to say that out loud. Okay, this item's certified, let's move on to the next.
Thank you.
Item three, thank you.
The third item on our agenda is a non-U-LAR post-referral review of an authorization in Manhattan Community District Seven. Our presenter is Chelsea Evans.
Hi, Chelsea.
Hi, good afternoon. This is a post-referral presentation for a private application at twenty-three sixty Broadway for zoning authorization pursuant to ZR one thirty-two two one three to allow a bank tenant to exceed the twenty-five-foot maximum street wall width. The applicant, Bell Nord Retail LLC, is requesting a zoning authorization to allow a four thousand five hundred twenty-eight square foot bank with a street frontage of fifty-five feet and seven inches to locate along Broadway within the Special Enhanced Commercial District Three on the upper west side of Manhattan Community District Seven. This application may be familiar to you all. In February of twenty twenty-five, the commission approved an authorization to allow a bank with a linear frontage of forty-six feet and three inches to occupy the subject commercial space. You can see that, you can see the proposed bank space in the image to the right. The applicant has since come back to the department and informed us that the bank frontage was measured incorrectly. DCP staff reviewed this change and determined that while the increase in street frontage does not affect the findings under which the previous authorization was granted, the increase in the requested waiver warranted another review by the commission, which is why this application is before you today. So here you can see a view of the building's frontage along Broadway. The yellow line shows the forty-six feet and three inches of street frontage that was previously approved. With this current application, the proposed bank would occupy fifty-five feet and seven inches of frontage along Broadway, and you can see that length shown in red. On June third, twenty twenty-five, Manhattan Community Board Seven voted to approve the application with a vote of thirty-seven in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention. In their recommendation, CB seven encouraged the applicant to prioritize the activation of the retail windows and street frontage to contribute positively to the pedestrian experience and overall vitality of the Broadway corridor. Pursuant to ZR one thirty-two two one three, the City Planning Commission may authorize a modification of the maximum street wall width if the applicant meets one of the following findings: A, that such additional frontage is required for the operation of the proposed use; or B, that a high ground floor vacancy rate exists- floor vacancy rate exists within a reasonable distance of the proposed uses, and that such high vacancy rate is a consequence of adverse market conditions. The applicant is pursuing this authorization pursuant to finding B. The terms reasonable distance and high vacancy rate are not defined in the ZR, but to put them in context, the department has previously stated that a healthy vacancy rate is between five and ten percent. Currently, twenty-six percent of the retail frontages within the surrounding Special Enhanced Commercial Districts Two and Three are vacant. Along Broadway, within the Special Enhanced Commercial District Three, the retail vacancy rate is about fourteen point eight percent. And here you can see an image of the currently vacant retail frontage looking east from Broadway. In summary, the applicant, Bell Nord Retail LLC, is requesting a zoning authorization to allow a bank tenant to occupy more than twenty-five feet street frontage along Broadway. Subject commercial space has been vacant for over a decade, and department staff believes that this application meets the findings of the authorization, and that there is sufficient evidence of high retail vacancy rates in the surrounding area, and recommends approval of the application. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we had approved it at forty-six feet, three inches. Uh, an error in measurement prompts the re-review of this to fifty-five feet and seven inches. Um, findings are the same, everything else is the same. Okay.
That's right.
Any, um, any questions on this? Okay. Uh, we're gonna, you have a question, Vice Chair?
No.
Okay, we're gonna move right to a vote on this one. Um, I'm sorry.
So sorry, I just realized it should be a scheduled for vote. That was not my mistake.
Ah, okay. Then we're gonna schedule it for a vote, and we'll do that at a later date. Um, we move fast around here, but not that fast. Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. The Vice Chairman was ready to go. Um, as was I. Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
We will schedule this one for a vote. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Apologies on that. Okay. The fourth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in the Bronx Community District Eight. Our presenter is Yafid Shaffer-Soul, um, who is on Zoom.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Good afternoon.
Okay, I'll take that as a yes. Um, I'll be providing updates on the five-six-oh-two, five-six-oh-four Broadway rezoning application, which was certified by the commission on April twenty-first. This is a private application in the Kingsbridge neighborhood of the Bronx Community District Eight to facilitate the development of a new thirteen-story cellar and residential building with an accessory parking garage. The proposed development would have a total of approximately one hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet of residential floor area and contain a total of two hundred and twenty-six affordable dwelling units pursuant to an HPD finance term sheet, MIH option one. Next slide, please. The applicant seeks a zoning map amendment from N-one-one to R-seven-three, C-two-three, and a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH, establish MIH for the rezoning area. Next slide, please. Community Board Eight held a hearing on May eighth and voted to approve the application with twenty-six in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining. There were no additional conditions added to the community board's recommendations. Next slide, please. The borough president held a public hearing for the project on June fourth and has submitted a favorable recommendation on June thirteenth. That is all I have for you today as for recommendations, or as for updates and the recommendations. Are there any questions?
Great. Thank you very much. We're gonna see this one for a public hearing on Wednesday. I hope the commission recognizes the expedited, uh, pre-hearing presentation. So thank you for being the first, uh, on that one. Uh, and let me see if there are any questions? Okay. We'll pick it up Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Sounds great. See you then. Bye.
Thanks, Yafid. Okay. The fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in Queens Community District, uh, thirteen. Our presenter is Haim Simon.
Oh, Haim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today I'm presenting the JFK Conduit Logistics Center demapping project in Queens Community District Thirteen. This project was certified on April seventh. This is a demapping project to facilitate the construction of a two-story commercial warehouse with sixty-six parking spaces. The applicant is requesting the demapping and acquisition of three paper streets, Byron Street, one hundred fifty-third Way, and one hundred forty-fifth Road. Community Board Thirteen held a hearing and voted thirty-four in favor, two opposed, and none abstaining to approve the application. The borough president issued a recommendation to approve with conditions regarding contracting for the project and electric vehicles which are listed here. Yeah, happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Again, Wednesday, we will pick this one up. Thank you, Haim.
Thank you.
Okay. The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District Fifteen. Our presenter is Ina Guzenfeldt.
Good. Good afternoon, Chair Grotnik and Commissioners. This application for a proposed development in, uh, the neighborhood of Homecrest in Brooklyn Community District Fifteen was certified on March third, twenty-twenty-five, and is now returning for a pre-hearing. Slide, please. The proposed actions include a zoning map amendment from R-five, uh, in the Special Ocean Parkway District to R-six-A and R-seven-A districts, noting that the applicant's site would be rezoned to R-six-A. Additionally, there are two text amendments to designate an MIH area co-terminus with the project area and remove the project area from the Special Ocean Parkway sub-district. If approved, the requested actions would facilitate a seven-story, three-point-nine FAR development with thirty-five thousand seven-hundred-eighty-six square feet of income-restricted residential floor area, which is intended as fifty-three units of senior housing. In addition, the building would provide two thousand two hundred ninety-two square feet of subgrade community facility space and twenty-four hundred square feet of outdoor recreational area in the building's rear yard. As noted, the application was certified on March third and duly referred to CB fifteen and the Brooklyn Borough President. CB fifteen held its public hearing and vote on April twenty-ninth. The board disapproved the application by a vote of zero in favor, thirty-two against, and four abstaining. In its recommendation, the board cited concerns about the development's height and negative impacts on surrounding lower-density properties, including abutting two-story homes fronting on Ocean Parkway. The borough president held his public hearing on May seventh and recommended approval without conditions. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much.
Could you go back just one slide, just to be clear? So we, we should just think of it as the community board disapproving, because the vote was to disapprove, but there were thirty-two against. So does that mean?
Yeah. So this was a no, this was a no from the
It was a no vote. It was a no vote. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, we should just make sure that we have this correct. Sometimes it's a resolution to disapprove, of which it would have been
A yes vote.
Thirty-two yeses, zero nos, and four abstaining.
I just wanted to
Let's just, let's just confirm that. But the fundamental point here is
They voted it down.
It was a no from the community board.
They voted it down. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, I have a quick question. In one of the graphics, um, there was a picture of these buildings. Are there any residents in these buildings currently?
Uh, no, there are not. These buildings are both currently vacant in anticipation of the proposed development.
Do we have any idea how they got vacant?
Um, they were acquired, uh, in nineteen eighty-eight and in two thousand and one by the Ahi Ezra Development Fund, uh, which owns other properties in the project area, uh, that are operated, um, as supportive and income-restricted housing. Um, and so in, in the process of that acquisition leading to today, um, those buildings were vacated, but they had been operated as community facilities for a long time.
And they're operated now as community facilities?
Yes, they were most recently operated as community facilities prior to being vacated for this development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll pick it up Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of special permits in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Alyson. And Dylan is covering. Sorry, apologies.
Hello, Dylan.
Thank you. Oh, good afternoon.
Commissioner Surrullos, with you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today I'll be presenting on three-fifty Park Avenue, which was certified by the commission at the March seventeenth review session. This is a private application by VNO Three-Fifty Park LLC to facilitate a new commercial development at three-fifty Park Avenue in the Midtown East neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Five. As explained in the certification presentation, in East Midtown, qualifying sites are eligible to increase their FAR via special permits and certifications. The applicant seeks a zoning special permit pursuant to ZR eighty-one, six forty-five for a three FAR bonus in connection with the provision of a public concourse. And next, they seek a zoning special permit pursuant to eighty-one, six eighty-five to permit modifications to provisions applicable to the development site to facilitate the proposed development's design. They are seeking a modification to waive the type of publicly accessible space specified in the qualifying site definition for East Midtown, and instead are providing the previously described public concourse. They are also seeking modifications for bulk flexibility in relation to the East Midtown sub-area boundary dividing the development site, as well as height and setback modifications. They are seeking modifications to street scape requirements and pedestrian circulation space, as well as the location of the main building entrance. Additional actions include chair certifications to certify that about ninety thousand square feet of overbuilt pre-nineteen-sixty-one floor area that exist on the development site can be demolished and rebuilt on the development site, and for the transfer of development rights from landmarks. The applicant is proposing a one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand square foot, one thousand five hundred and eighty-six foot tall commercial office development and a twelve thousand five hundred square foot public concourse. Citadel and Citadel Securities will be the anchor tenants. The building is proposed to contain train spaces, collaborative spaces, offices, and tenant amenities, in addition to about seventeen thousand square feet of ground floor retail space. There would be a total of about twenty-five FAR on the entire zoning lot. The proposed public concourse would surround the building's lobby on three sides and be open from seven AM to ten PM. It would contain water features, planters, trees, bench seating, movable tables, and movable chairs. On May eighth, twenty-twenty-five, Manhattan Community Board Five voted to approve the application with the following conditions: The applicant explore ways to provide access to public restrooms for users of the public space; the applicant incorporate additional seating around the water features and surrounding concourse area; and the applicant develop a plan for hosting public programming at the site. This resolution passed with a vote of thirty-five in favor, one opposed, and two abstaining. On June twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine recommended approval of the application with the following condition: To work with Community Board Five and other stakeholders to ensure the public realm is vibrant, welcoming, and coordinated with public realm efforts across the neighborhood. This concludes my presentation. No on tech questions.
Great, thank you. Um, we're all set for Wednesday. Unless there are questions now? Great. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of special permits and a zoning text amendment in Manhattan Community District Five. Our presenter is Matthew Gutierrez.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, great. Today I'll provide an update on a private application at five-fifteen, Seventh Avenue, which is located in Manhattan Community District Five. This application was last presented to the commission on April seventh. The applicant intends to construct an approximately three hundred and fifty thousand square foot, eighteen FAR commercial tower, which would contain a roughly fifty-four hundred square foot covered pedestrian space on the ground floor. The applicant is considering two possible configurations for this site. One would only contain office use and would stand at thirty-eight stories tall, and the other would contain both office and transient hotel uses, and it would stand at thirty-six stories tall. It would contain, this, this latter scenario would contain approximately one hundred and forty-three thousand square feet of office floor area and two hundred and seven thousand square feet of hotel floor area, and the hotel would contain two hundred and fifty-five rooms for guests. The applicant seeks several text amendments to ZR section one twenty-one to establish a new sub-district A-three within the Special Garment Center District, which would modify special bulk regulations and establish new CPC special permits. In addition, the applicant seeks three CPC special permits that would enable a floor area bonus for a covered pedestrian space, uh, and increased maximum tower lot coverage, as well as transient hotel use. However, the list of requested zoning actions would need to be amended if the Midtown South Mixed-Use Plan, or MSMX, were to be adopted as currently proposed. MSMX would make the proposed developments, uh, bulk possible as of right, meaning that the requested text amendments would no longer be necessary. As this table shows, under MSMX, only two special permits would still be needed to facilitate the proposed development. The first is for the floor area bonus for the CPS or covered pedestrian space, and the second is for a transient hotel use. I'll just quickly note that under MSMX, the hotel special permit would be associated with a different ZR section. It would be switching from seventy-four, one fifty-two, uh, or it would become seventy-four, one fifty-two as opposed to seventy-four, one fifty-three. So I just wanted to, uh, update you on a, uh, design change that has occurred since this was certified on April seventh. Responding to the commission's interest in there being a public restroom on the ground floor, the applicant now intends to include one. This slide depicts the floor plan for the office-only scenario with the new public restroom outlined in red. Like the cafe, the public restroom would be technically outside of the CPS boundary, but it would be directly accessible from it, and this change does not affect the overall square footage of the CPS. The applicant informed both CB Five as well as the borough president of this change before they submitted their resolutions. Uh, and here is the floor plan for the hotel and office scenario, also showing in red the, the location of the new public restroom. You might notice that the CPS dimensions, uh, differ slightly between these scenarios, but the overall square footage is identical. Uh, on May eighth, Community Board Five passed a resolution recommending that this application be approved with conditions. Thirty-six members voted in favor, zero voted in opposition, and three members abstained. Oh, I should go back. Yeah. So, um, the applicant agreed to the following conditions: Uh, one, that the building would be fully electric, including hot water and HVAC systems, as opposed to using natural gas. The CPS, uh, would also open, uh, between five AM and ten PM year-round, as the, opposed to the originally proposed seven AM to ten PM. And lastly, uh, CB Five would be provided written plans for the maintenance, operations, and security of the CPS. Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine also recommends the approval of this application. He encourages the applicant to implement, uh, Community Board Five's requests, which I just covered and which are shown on this slide. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. So we'll have a public hearing on this one Wednesday. Thank you very much. Thanks. Great. Next up.
Okay. The ninth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination of for Grace Houses. Uh, the city council proposes to modify the zoning map and the zoning text amendments, and staff believe these modifications are within scope. Lynn Su is on Zoom to present.
Okay, Lynn Su.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Chair Grotnik, Commissioners.
Hi. Can you speak up a little bit?
Lynn Su, one second. We're gonna turn up the volume in the hearing room. Um, it's a little faint.
Okay.
One second.
Sounds good.
Try again.
Okay, how do I sound now?
Better. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Grotnik and Commissioners. I will be presenting a city council modification for Grace Houses rezoning application. I will be presenting a City Council modification for Grace Houses rezoning application, which will be certified on December 2nd, which was certified on December 2nd, 2024. The proposed development is by the applicant Grace Housing Development Fund. The project is located at 233 New Jersey Avenue in East New York Community District Five in Brooklyn. The CPC approved a zoning map to change current zoning from R5B to R6A and mapping MIH options 1 and 3 through a text amendment. The City Council is now proposing modifications that would adjust the project area boundary and update the MIH mapping area. As a reminder, the development site totals approximately 148,700 square feet and includes residential space of 132,800 square feet, which will accommodate 153 income-restricted units, a community facility space totaling 15,900 square feet, which includes a new space for Grace Baptist Church, and 68 voluntary parking spaces. Next slide, please. As part of the City Council's proposed modification, a portion of the CPC-approved R6A rezoning project area, which you'll see in the left image, will remain zoned as a R5B while the rest will be rezoned to a R6A. Focusing on the right image, a portion of the R6A boundary is removed, as shown by the green outline, and will be partially intersected by the existing R5B to the south of the project area, removing the CPC-approved R6A. The L-shaped area located within the R6A rezoning is the development site. To note the difference between the zoning districts, the R6A district allows medium-density development with a max FAR of 3.9, a building height of 95 feet, and a base height of 65 feet. In contrast, the R5B district proposed by the City Council supports low, lower-density potential development with a max FAR of 2.0, a building height limit of 55 feet, and a base height of 45 feet. Parking requirements remain at 25% of dwelling units for both zoning districts with no parking needed for income-restricted units. However, R5B allows a higher waiver cap at 15 spaces than the R6A. Next slide, please. The second City Council modification is a zoning text amendment to change the MIH border and area to be conterminous with the changing rezoning project area boundary. Next slide, please. In summary, the CPC-approved zoning map amendment to change a current zoning from R5B to a R6A and mapping MIH options 1 and 3 through a text amendment. The City Council is now proposing modifications that would adjust the project area boundary and update the MIH mapping area. The Department believes these modifications are in scope. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Lynn Sue.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Unit count, Lynn Sue, question from the Vice Chairman. What's the impact on units?
There is actually no change on applicant-owned lots or development, or the development site itself, and none of the non-applicant-owned lots that were cut out were considered potential or projected development sites per seeker. So there will be no impacts in the units.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, this is a scope determination, so time for us to go ahead and make that determination, if everybody's comfortable. All right, I will seek consent by a voice vote now to send a scope determination letter to the City Council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, we will proceed with that scope determination. The ayes have it, thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thanks, Lynn Sue. Okay, future votes, future votes for consideration on Wednesday, June 18th. Staff have prepared reports on 347 Flushing Avenue, 4211 30th Avenue rezoning, 47 Hall Street rezoning, and on 236 Gold Street rezoning. I'll note there was a follow-up letter in your materials on Gold Street, and Griffin is here to present.
Hi, Griffin.
Great, good afternoon, Chair Grodne and Commissioners. The Department believes that the zoning map amendment to change an R6B to a C62A district and the zoning tax amendment to create an MIH area are appropriate. Together, these actions to facilitate a new 14-story, 79,570-square-foot, mixed-use residential and commercial building containing 114 dwelling units, approximately 30 of which will be permanently income-restricted pursuant to MIH, as well as 2,115 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. Much of the existing character on the project block consists of 13- and 14-story high-lot coverage apartment buildings. The proposed zoning district would support development that is consistent with the remainder of the block. The inclusion of MIH in this application will ensure that there is the introduction of permanent income-restricted units with development. The Department believes that the project area can support further residential growth since it is located in an amenity and transit-rich area. There are five subway stations within a half a mile, and the neighborhood is in close proximity to major job hubs in downtown Brooklyn, Dumbo, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard. The Department recognizes the opposition heard from the members of the Bridge Plaza Association at the public hearing regarding the proposed density and the departure from the 2003 framework, but note that the 2003 Bridge Plaza rezoning took place over 20 years ago and that there's an impetus to reevaluate the opportunity to promote mixed-income housing. The Department would like to highlight that the project area does not propose zoning changes for any of the existing lower-scale buildings along Death Field or Concord Streets, and will instead support the reactivation of a long vacant site with more housing, including the neighborhood's first permanently income-restricted housing. The project's areas access to transit and proximity to services and jobs in downtown Brooklyn makes this location appropriate for increased residential density. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Excellent, okay. Madam Secretary.
Staff have also prepared reports on Bally's Ferry Point map amendment. There were additional comments and testimonies in your materials, and Stephen is here to present.
Hello, good afternoon. The Department of City Planning recommends approval of the application by Bally's New York Operating Company LLC for city map amendment, the zoning map amendment, and disposition of non-residential city-owned property on the development site located in Ferry Point Park, the Bronx, New York. The project would remove an approximately 15.7-acre parcel from its designation as a park on the city map, to map an additional 2.4-acre existing roadway within Ferry Point Park, which has mapped as Parkland, and map it as a city street. Map a C84 commercial zoning district on a portion of the proposed development site and dispose of property located in the park for a non-exclusive access easement of approximately 1.02 acres over a portion of a larger waterfront access roadway.
Bless you. Bless you again.
These land use actions would allow the Bally's Gaming Facility Project to move forward in the state-defined gaming license review process and for the state to consider a gaming application by Bally's on the development site later this year. The approval of these proposed actions do not approve or disapprove any proposed gaming application that Bally's may submit this summer. These actions, along with the future approvals by a community advisory committee, the State Gaming Location Board, and the State Gaming Commission, would facilitate the development of a new 2.58 million-square-foot gaming and entertainment facility, including a casino, a hotel, an event center, off-street parking, and other amenities. The Department believes that the mapping actions and disposition are appropriate within the context of the public benefits and economic benefits linked to the possibility of the applicant being awarded a gaming license later this year. If the applicant is not awarded a gaming license, the map amendments and disposition would not take effect, and the project would remain in its current condition. That concludes my recommendation.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Thank you again for the materials and the brief overview, but did we ever get the cross-section across the Ferry Point Park, like across the highway to the wetland, toward the wetland?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe it was in your materials that were sent, the applicant sent in post-hearing.
I'll look for it, thank you.
Okay, if they're not there, just let me know.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'll look for it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Stephen.
Okay. Lastly, for future votes, we have Midtown South Mixed Use Plan, MSMX. There were public comments and testimonies in your materials. Andy is here to present.
Andy, good afternoon. Brought some water today. Yeah, took a beta blocker, too. So this is our final review session before the scheduled vote on Wednesday. We wanted to entertain any lingering questions and also provide some additional details on two modifications that we're recommending the CPC approve, and also to give our staff recommendation. So you've already seen this before, but the first recommendation, just to reiterate, so the proposed MSMX street wall regulations require 100% of the street wall be at or near the street line. During public engagement, we were made aware of certain situations where sites containing a landmark may be unable to comply with these rules, either because of LPC requirements or because existing landmarks set back from lot lines. So in order to avoid putting developers in sort of this compliance trap, we're proposing additional flexibility for sites that are within 15 feet of LPC landmarks and exempting them from street wall requirements. This is a new CPC modification that we're recommending. So based on additional feedback, both from the public and Commission, we're proposing the second modification. So in order to create a more unified, consistent use and bulk framework for the rezoning area, the actions include removing the southern half of Block 1012, which you see sort of highlighted there in red, from the special Midtown District and bringing it into the newly constituted special Midtown South Mixed Use District. So we heard feedback that with that remapping, that half-block stands to lose the ability to receive transfer floor area from listed theaters within the special Midtown District. The proposed mod would create new text for the special district to retain the theater TDR mechanism just for that half-block, while still bringing the southern half of Block 1012 into the new MSX special district and rezoning it from M16 to M19A R12. And this will ensure that listed theaters in Midtown aren't losing any potential landing sites for their excess development rights. So now to the recommendation. So the actions you're being asked to consider are a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment, sorry, zoning map amendment that rezones existing M16 and M16D districts into paired manufacturing and residential mixed-use districts. Alongside these new districts, the map changes establish a new special Midtown South Mixed Use District, MSX, eliminate the outdated Special Garment Center District, and reconfigure the boundaries of the special Hudson Yards and special Midtown Districts. The text amendment would map MIH across the entire rezoning area with all three MIH options, introduce bulk and urban design controls to better reflect the loft character of the area, remove restrictions on residential conversions in the neighboring C64M district, expand the transit bonus, and apply the covered pedestrian space bonus, among other changes aimed at shaping a more livable, pedestrian-friendly, and economically vibrant neighborhood. So these changes were developed through extensive engagement with community and stakeholders and elected officials in very close coordination with city and other public agencies throughout a years-long planning process, and together, these changes will create a zoning framework that contributes significantly to housing production, responds to changing post-COVID-19 pandemic work patterns, and diversifies the local economy, and provides tools to revitalize the public realm and help transform Midtown into a more attractive place to live, shop, visit, and do business. We believe the MSMX plan will help alleviate the city's dire housing shortage. We're particularly excited to have the opportunity to map for the very first time the new R11 and R12 districts created by City of Yes and enabled after years of advocacy and alchemy for lifting the arbitrary 12 FAR cap on residential uses. This zoning change replaces decades-old obsolete manufacturing districts that shut off housing in some of the most centrally-located and amenity-rich areas of our city, and puts in place innovative zoning that recognizes that Midtown Manhattan is the perfect location to be ambitious with our new tools for unlocking housing. The plan would require permanent income-restricted housing and new construction expansions and conversions by MIH, remove existing restrictions on converting large buildings to housing, and allow complementary community uses such as schools, libraries, and museums. Crucially, the plan's projected to facilitate the creation of approximately 9,700 new homes over the next 10 years, up to 2,900 of which will be permanently income-restricted in one of the most high-opportunity areas of the city. The plan is also designed to bolster critical economic activity, so in addition to permitting housing, the new zoning will continue to permit the widest possible range of non-residential uses, including light manufacturing, wholesale, showrooms, offices, and retail, which will ensure that the neighborhood remains a hub for business and innovation. By removing the 10,000-square-foot cap on retail uses and opening up the possibility of creative live-work arrangements, we believe the MSMX plan adapts to the evolving needs of the 21st century economy by creating a zoning framework where a wide range of businesses, both existing and new, can flourish alongside a growing residential population. And beyond its housing and economic focus, we believe the plan will enhance Midtown South's built-character and public realm. MSMX will incentivize opportunities for transit improvements and new, high-quality public spaces to serve people who live, work, and visit Midtown South. The plan will introduce urban design rules to balance higher densities with attractive pedestrian-oriented streetscapes. The urban design regulations will ensure that new construction complements the existing architectural fabric, particularly the area's iconic loft buildings, and reflects the highly varied built-character of Midtown South. Additionally, by requiring active ground floors and prohibiting flashing signs, the plan promotes a more engaging and pleasant street-level experience. Although we anticipate that these changes will positively impact shared spaces, we recognize that improving the public realm goes well beyond the tools that we have available under zoning, which is why we're crafting a series of non-zoning investments alongside our partner agencies and local elected officials to improve quality of life. In short, it's no surprise that we strongly support the Midtown South Mixed Use Plan. It will encourage much-needed housing, economic opportunity, and improve public spaces in the heart of Manhattan, which together will create a more equitable, resilient, and vibrant neighborhood. Thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Andy, and thanks to you and the entire Manhattan team for all of your efforts to bring us to this point. Big project, important project, and we really appreciate all of the attention, response to inquiries, public testimony, et cetera. So thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions for you, Commissioner Mann.
I want to make sure I understood the first point, Andy, on the setback rules as relates to landmark buildings. So I'm not sure I totally understood the thinking there.
Right, so, I mean, this rule was developed specifically for the Marble Collegiate Site, which has an existing landmark church on it. That's part of a much larger zoning lot where infill development is being proposed. The church itself sets back a few feet from the side lot line, and so because the new building won't be able to abut the new church, it could only be built on its own tax lot. We would create this situation where the development couldn't comply with the street wall rules because it couldn't come up to meet the church. So this is just creating a little bit of flexibility to be able to respond to existing landmarks and just give a little bit of additional flexibility there.
Okay, yeah, so I don't have the slide visualized in my head that clearly, but wouldn't, couldn't we just apply the eight-foot rule that's there in the existing zoning text to the building segment that is the new building's segment?
No, because it would have to be 100, there would have to be 100% street wall within eight feet of the street line.
Right. I guess maybe it'd be helpful to see just a simplified plan to understand what the problem is we're solving for, because I'm not sure I totally understand it. Do we, have they brought us a proposed development scheme?
They haven't provided one, but, you know, we could draft a memo to be able to more clearly show that for you before the vote.
Yeah, just some information to understand what's driving this city, this modification would be helpful. Obviously, there's other sites presumably that have landmarks, right? So we're, we think we're solving for the Marble Collegiate Site, but potentially there's others, and so, and I, you know, right, so Chair, I'm not totally convinced that the setback rules are the right ones, but leaving that aside for a second, I'd just love to understand this proposed modification better.
Understood. We will follow up. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Hi, thanks a lot for the presentation and the changes. You know what my issues are, so I'm just going to ask once more. Do we have any updates on what, if anything, is being done with the Garment Center and with the $25 million that had originally been allocated to purchase a site for use? with the $25 million that had originally been allocated to purchase a site for use as a home for the Garment Center industry?
Thank you, Commissioner. We don't have additional information, and, you know, I think, as we've said before, the city is taking this issue very seriously, working together with our partner agencies. That includes EDC on the best way to respond to the needs of the garment and fashion sector in Midtown South, but we don't have final plans to be able to report to you today.
Do we know how the $25 million was reprogrammed and for what uses?
The, are you referring to the $20 million?
Yes.
For the building acquisition?
Yes.
That, well, there were, there were, as we understand it, there were no viable sites that were identified at the time following the 2018 rezoning, and those funds are, you know, remained uncommitted.
Are they uncommitted or were they reprogrammed?
I don't know that they were reprogrammed. For another use, you mean, or?
Yeah, for another economic development use.
We, we'll come back to you.
Okay.
With that information.
Okay. I mean, the basic bottom-line question there is, are those funds still available to be used to bolster and support the Garment Center District? Or are we talking about some having to, some other people who do budget stuff having to put more money in to do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Building on Commissioner Benjamin's question, I was wondering if you had any updates in terms of the perhaps non-zoning measurements or strategies to address the potentially displaced businesses. Is there anything concrete that you could, that some of the sister agencies have committed to at this point, or are we just hoping for the best?
Well, we're not hoping for the best. I mean, as I mentioned to Commissioner Benjamin, it is something that the city is working very hard on right now, and, you know, that includes with not just, you know, partner agencies but stakeholders, you know, elected officials, but, you know, we don't have a final, a final package yet. You know, again, the, you know, the EIS identified that, you know, that there were not significant adverse impacts associated with business displacement, but that doesn't mean that, you know, we don't recognize that, you know, the garment and fashion sector in particular are important components of the local, the local economy here. Bless you.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. It's just that since we're voting on Wednesday, you know, it would be useful to know if there's anything concrete that has been at least discussed, other than just, you know, hoping that the other agencies can address it.
I, I will, I'll just jump in to say that it's, it's not incredibly satisfying at the commission level that all of the non-zoning components are not in place, that will be in place at the time of final adoption of the thing. It's not uncommon, however, but it is, I understand that that's, that is a challenge that we have as built-in through our process here on a neighborhood plan. I see it. I understand it, so I understand why these points are being made. But I also will just note that there are a number of different angles and efforts being made to work with the council, council member, partner agencies to try to satisfy as many of these concerns as can be satisfied. So, but it's, it's not going to be resolved by the moment of our vote here at the commission, but that also is not an uncommon, that's actually, that's the norm.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. That's clear and it's understandable. The, the spirit of the question, though, is raised because, you know, at least I suggested to consider some zoning actions that could address it. And since the decision is to not pursue zoning in that way and rather work with the sister agencies, that's the spirit of the question. The other, perhaps the other part of the question is, and, and, you know, let me just clarify, is whether in the context of the industrial retention plan that the agency is, is working on, whether there's anything in there that could potentially, may already be in place, just so we understand, you know, if not here, then where in terms of the potential zoning-specific actions?
I'll jump in on that one, too. That's a plan that will be completed at the end of this calendar year with drafts coming out pretty soon, and it will not be, you know, details that would be put immediately into action this calendar year. There will be a number of thoughts, proposals, ideas, concepts. So it is not something that I can say would be immediately relevant here, but that's, of course, still an ongoing process and one that's being presently studied with a draft to come out in a matter of weeks, but that, of course, will also be after the vote.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Back to you, Commissioner Benjamin.
Yeah, I would also just like to clarify. The reason this is a significant issue for me is because we are removing the last vestiges of the protection for the Garment Center District. That is part of the actions we're taking. So I'm not asking the questions about what we are going to do in a vacuum of, well, this could adversely affect them. I think we would all agree that the district has not functioned as we originally had hoped it would, but I am still troubled that we're removing the last vestiges that might, that does retain some space, even if there's no one in it, with no idea really, or we, we don't have one of what the future is. We have, in other cases, as Commissioner Osorio said, used zoning tools to hold out space for manufacturers or makers or other things with an eye towards zoning being the tool that makes sure those users are there. So that's the spirit of my concerns.
I certainly understand that. I get it, and I think where there's a recognition here that the zoning tools have not been particularly productive, so therefore, what are the other tools that might be available? And those will be an ongoing conversation between now and the time that the council will have its consideration, but I certainly understand the spirit of your comment, and I appreciate it, and we certainly, you know, think this is a priority all around. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if there are other questions. Okay. Thank you all very much again.
Thank you.
And we'll pick this one up for vote Wednesday. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Future votes for July 2nd. The Landmarks Preservation Commission, LPC, filed a designation report for the modular building apartment duplex. Materials were shared in your weakened materials, and a CPC report will be shared ahead of the July 2nd vote. Okay. Post-hearing follow-ups on Lenox Hill Hospital. There were public comments and testimonies in your weakened materials, and Aska is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hi, Aska.
This is a poaching follow-up for a private application by Lenox Hill Hospital to facilitate the revitalization and enlargement of the Lenox Hill Hospital campus. This is an existing Upper East Side location at 100 East 77th Street in the Lenox Hill neighborhood of Manhattan Community District Eight. At the public hearing, the commission requested some additional information about the proposed hospital's programmatic needs to better understand the request for additional floor area and block modifications. The applicant provided the chart on the right, which compares the existing department gross floor area with the proposed to illustrate how the different departments will benefit from the additional floor area. In the following slides, I will walk through the proposed hospital programmatic needs for patient beds, operating rooms, and the new emergency department. The departmental gross floor area for patient bed program would include, would increase from 177,000 to 412,000 square feet. The departmental square footage refers to the total area of a programmed department inclusive of partitions, columns, department rooms, and department corridors. In addition to the proposed 475 single-bed patient rooms, this includes nurse supervisor offices, nurse stations, multipurpose rooms, medication safety zones and rooms, nourishment spaces, clean supply rooms, soiled work rooms, equipment storage rooms, environmental services rooms, nursing and care team locker rooms and lounges, and family lounges. The proposed program for 475 beds was determined through a rigorous and well-established process utilized for certificate of need applications through the New York State Department of Health. This analysis incorporates a comprehensive review of daily census data and department-specific occupancy trends alongside market projections for ships and healthcare delivery, including the anticipated expansion of ambulatory services and the evolving needs of an aging population. The proposed 470-bed count is data-driven and reflects the long-term healthcare needs of Lenox Hill Hospital and the community it serves. While the increase in total beds is limited, the proposal would enable an increase in hospital rooms from 311 to 475. As of 2010, the New York State Department of Health adheres to federal guidelines that call for single-bedded rooms, which are better for patient outcomes. Each patient room will be approximately 270 square feet, which will allow for 215 square feet of clear-floor space required for critical care rooms and to accommodate family or caregiver space. The remaining 75 feet, 75 square feet will, sorry, the remaining 65 square feet will be for patient bathrooms, clinical storage, hand wash sink, and storage for patient belongings. In addition, about 60 square feet immediately outside of each room would be dedicated care team space and used for observation, documentation, information review, personal protective equipment and supply storage, and access to the patient room. The size of the patient rooms would meet industry standards and the minimum requirements of the current facility guidelines institute or FGI, a nonprofit organization that works to develop the guidelines for designing and building hospitals. The second major improvement to hospital program facilitated by the proposal issues surgical department. Surgical department rooms include ORs, a pre- and post-operative patient care suite, staff locker rooms and lounges, nurse control stations, handscrew facilities, emergency equipment storage, clean linen storage, wheelchair and small equipment storage, medical gas storage, large mobile equipment storage, human specimen storage as required, environmental services rooms, soiled work rooms, OR clean equipment and supply storage, patient belonging storage, and family or caregiver waiting areas. The 30 ORs distributed across three hospital floors would be designed according to industry standards ranging from 360 square feet to 1,000 square feet. These larger ORs with ceiling heights of 10 feet and floor-to-floor heights of 18 feet would accommodate increased mechanical duct wear, allowing for the appropriate air change rates in the ORs, ceiling-mounted equipment and lighting rooms, and large fixed or mobile imaging equipments that require clear ceiling dimensions to function within the room. Finally, the proposal would allow for a right-sized emergency department, expanding it from the current 13,300 square feet to 40,500 departmental square feet. It would increase the number of treatment positions from 34 to 48, and all these 150 square feet positions would be hardwood rather than curtained. This slide shows a section of the two proposed building envelopes to illustrate how the hospital program is distributed throughout the two building envelopes. The floor-to-floor height is of levels 1 to 10 in the proposed new building would match the height of the floors in the existing portions of the facility to remain to allow for seamless connection between the new and existing hospital buildings. The floor-to-floor height of OR rooms, OR floors 11 to 13, shown in yellow, is approximately 18 feet and meets industry standard, as I explained previously. The floors of the ORs are composed of primarily patient rooms, shown in blue. Patient rooms require significant mechanical overhead duct wear and are provided with a ceiling height of 10 feet to accommodate bedside medical equipment or ceiling-mounted patient handling lifts. The floor-to-floor height of these rooms is 16 feet, which is consistent with industry standards. Also seen in this section are the mechanical floors throughout the two envelopes, shown in gray. The mid-level and upper-level mechanical floors, inclusive of screened rooftop mechanical equipment, that is included in the building height totals 120 to 125 feet in height. The proposed mechanical floor areas and volumes are consistent with benchmarking for modern-day hospitals. The space needs for mechanical systems within a hospital responsive to hospital construction codes, energy codes, and unique clinical program needs are typically 20% of gross floor area. The volume of mechanical systems and their contribution to building height is typically much greater than non-institutional buildings due to the large floor-to-floor heights necessary for equipment rooms to screen rooftop mechanical systems that are included in project height and the ceiling plenum space allocated to overhead mechanical distribution on each floor. In total, 40 to 45% of the project building height for the two options is attributable to the mechanical space needs. This concludes my follow-ups and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks very much, Aska. Let me see if there are any questions for you. Commissioner Mann?
I've been just asking about the loading issue on the, I know this came up, I think Commissioner Gold asked about it at the hearing as well, and I just, I'm still a little bit confused as to why a non-back-in-back-out loading option isn't feasible, either turntable or through block or consolidation of the environmental loading, which I understand is a different waste stream that goes in the receiving and materials management loading. Has there been any additional clarity there in terms of an ability to consolidate loading on the south side or an ability to do turnaround that might reassure me that this is the right approach?
Sure. So, as you can see from this ground floor plan, you know, it really is trying to accommodate a lot of different needs within a very limited, for the, limited for the size of the hospital requirements of this. You know, it needs to have the vertical circulation in the middle as well as, you know, the, the different entrances for the different hospital programs. The hospital has looked at sort of all the existing possibilities within this floor plan, and another thing you can notice in this floor plan is also the small squares, which relate to all the structural systems that are existing for the existing buildings that are proposed to remain as is. So giving those limitations on the ground floor and having to accommodate a lot of different needs, it is very difficult to have a pull-in and pull-out sort of for loading, especially because of the large size of the trucks.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm still sort of unpersuaded that's the right answer here, but maybe this would be one, again, where we don't have the satisfactory answers here. Okay. Thanks for the time.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions now? Okay. Thank you, Aska. Madam Secretary?
There are no other items today on the agenda, Chair.
That's what I thought you were going to say, so thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you all. We will see you Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
The time is 3:23 p.m.